Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, September 25th, 2024. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website. And for guest speakers joining us at the table, please do not turn your microphones off. Our first order of business is rule call. Will the clerk please take the role?
Mr. Sharland, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mr. Lavelle, Mr. Mosley,
Here.
Ms. Kell Smith, Ms. Warwick,
Here.
Mr. Wilson, Ms. Strasburger, Chair,
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you very much. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before city council. Profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Jess Barad.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jessica Barad. I am a resident from the South Side Slopes and a volunteer policy leader with the Humane Society. I am sure that many of you here today love animals and have pets of your own. Local shelters and rescues are overcrowded, so they are turning people away, which means more animals are being abandoned, often ending up outside starving and suffering. This is a reality for many animals here in Pittsburgh. Veterinary costs are up by nine percent in 2024 and pet food costs are up by forty-five percent since 2020. Access to low-cost spay and neuter services is a cost-effective and humane way of handling the surplus animal problem. So far this year, I have rescued ten cats. The city offers residents a voucher program for five free spay and neuter services for cats, but the program needs to be expanded so that rescues and individuals like me who rescue within the city can use it for more than five animals annually. It needs to be advertised. The community needs to be educated on animal welfare. An outside community cat can be feral or stray. A stray cat is socialized with humans and was often someone's pet that was abandoned. It should not be living outside. A feral cat is not socialized to humans and will stay away from them. I cannot stress this enough. Many of these outside community cats are not feral. They are scared and frightened strays that are used to the indoors and should be inside as pets. Only one out of the ten cats I rescued this year was truly feral. The rest were strays. Two are microchipped. Their owners abandoned them outside and did not want them back. They were registered to HARP and HARP did not give me any guidance or assistance on those two cats. I do not work for an animal shelter, nor do I run an animal rescue. I do not go looking for these cats. I rescue them all from my backyard, and I pay for everything myself. I refuse to put a friendly cat back outside destined for a short, hard life. I will not contact animal control because the animals may be euthanized in certain circumstances, including overcrowding. So, since shelters and rescues are often full, I foster yet another cat for weeks or months through a local rescue. I cannot turn a blind eye, nor do I want to see twenty kittens in my yard, so I keep rescuing. There will continue to be overpopulation and abandonment without better community education, resources, and expanded access to low-cost spay and neuter. Without any of these, the population will continue to increase and your constituents will start to notice the outside cat problem as I and the others who are here today already do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next registered speaker is Anna Montano.
Anna Montano, North Side. My name is Anna Montano, and I've been a city of Pittsburgh resident all of my life. In January 2021, my husband and I bought a home in the North Side. After about a month of living there, I noticed cats in my backyard. A month later, there were more. By March, there were over twenty cats and kittens outside. I knew nothing about the problem with homeless cats, but intuitively knew I had to do something. I started to do my own research, joined Facebook groups, reached out to local rescues, watched YouTube videos, talked to experienced trappers and rescuers. I started trapping the cats and paid for all of them to be vetted out of my own pocket. This experience completely changed my life forever. The city of Pittsburgh suspended the spay neuter program for about five months, which caused a huge increase of stray and feral cats on the streets. We can barely keep our heads above water. One large problem that we face is that we never know what we will catch when we go to trap. This past year, nine out of ten cats that I trapped ended up being friendly. This means they could not be returned back outside. While the city of Pittsburgh's spay neuter program covers the surgery and rabies vaccination, independent rescuers are still left to cover the costs of the test for FIV, FELV, microchip, FERCP vaccine, food, litter, flea treatments, dewormers, and any additional medical costs that arise in order to adopt a cat out. Many of the cats I trapped this year had serious medical issues that had to be addressed, costing over $8,000. This includes ruptured eyes that required surgical removal, broken limbs requiring amputation, upper respiratory infections, cancer, dental disease, and fungal infections. This requires us to pay out of pocket or rely on donations. Since April, I have been working on a massive trapping project in the Troy Hill neighborhood with another rescuer. We went into it thinking this would be a trap-neuter-return project of maybe ten to twelve cats. We have already surpassed twenty-five cats in just a one-block radius, and all of them have been friendly, many with severe medical issues. We have dealt with combative people who abuse drugs and who have threatened us and made us feel unsafe. There are only two humane officers in the city currently, and they did not return requests for help. We still have the remainder of the neighborhood to cover. This is a prime example of what I mean by you never know what you will catch. The people before you represent only a small part of independent rescue. Many more volunteers are working tirelessly day and night. Most of us have no facility. We take these animals into our homes to foster them and provide the care they require. We get anywhere from twenty to fifty requests per week from residents. If we stop doing this, what will happen? It will be a colossal expense to our city. The spay neuter covers the bare minimum. Please expand the spay and neuter program.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Jody Mater.
My name is Jody Mater. I'm a resident of Mount Washington and co-founder of Cat Calls Rescue. Thanks to me and my lifelong geographic location, our very small rescue brings in over a hundred cats per year. Mount Washington, Allentown, Beltsuber, Carrick, and Mount Oliver are just a few of the areas that we cover, and these areas are riddled with cats. This past August, I trapped twenty-six cats from one cul-de-sac in Mount Washington. Back in May, this twenty-six cat colony consisted of only eight cats with a feeder who couldn't be bothered to get any of them fixed before she moved away. Three months later, those eight cats turned into twenty-six, and while this might be the highest number I've trapped in one location this year, it is not my highest number to date. In 2019, my rescue partner and I pulled thirty-two cats and kittens out of a home filled with urine, feces, and carcasses of newborn kittens. You truly haven't lived until you find yourself quite literally knee-deep in a stranger's waterbed covered in urine-soaked sheets, hands gripping the hind end of a mama cat who is actively in labor as she is trying to escape from a hole in the wall leading to the outdoors. Oftentimes, our rescue takes place in homes like this, in underserved areas with dilapidated buildings. These homes are often inhabited by the elderly or by people with mental or physical disabilities who think they are doing good thing by feeding twenty-plus cats while simultaneously being either disinterested or unable to provide veterinary care. When our offered help is resisted, we have to call in reinforcements. Up until this year, Officer Christine Luffy was reinforcements. She would knock on doors, speak to the feeders, educate them, offer assistance, and ensure our safety. Her badge has helped us save over one hundred cats. In her absence, officers from multiple municipalities in Allegheny County have resorted to contacting me as well as other rescuers for information and resources as they run into animal concerns. While I'm ecstatic to see them trying to do the right things, it is very clear to me that our police officers are not properly equipped for calls regarding animal neglect and abuse. I do hope we can remedy this with additional training for our officers. As one humane officer, to properly serve our city is unrealistic, not to mention animal abuse is often tied to domestic abuse, and everyone needs to get familiar. Both underserved and well-off areas in the city of Pittsburgh have severe lack of knowledge concerning very basic animal care. This past summer, a woman surrendered her cat to my rescue. As I was packing her cat into a carrier, her children asked me what I was doing with their cat. I told them I would be taking it to the vet. Their immediate response was, "What's a vet?" We are truly cultivating a generation of complete lack of awareness, and we as a city can absolutely do better. Please advertise the COP program so that residents are actually aware of it and understand the urgency of it. Many of it have no idea that it exists. Human beings are the only beings capable of stopping animal overpopulation. Let's be the first city to get this right. We owe it to our furry friends. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Alicia E. Wenzel.
Hi, my name is Alicia Wenzel, and I live in Mount Oliver. I do not officially run a cat rescue, but I have trapped fifty-six cats in the past three years from my general area. I also volunteer for different rescue organizations here in Western Pennsylvania. In my thirty years of involvement with rescue, I've never seen a cat crisis like we are seeing right now. While I understand that some folks in this room are fortunate enough to live in areas that will never see a single feral or stray cat on their street, we are here to remind you that just because you don't see it doesn't mean it doesn't exist. The halt on the spay and neuter voucher program this past year has had an immense negative effect on the Pittsburgh cat and dog population. When the voucher program was suspended, small rescues spoke out about the impact it would have, but were only met with the insinuation that they were profiting from animals that had been altered using this public program. The suggestion that small rescues make a profit from a $150 adoption fee is egregious. Most rescues operate in the red, constantly begging for funds to get animals out of unimaginable conditions. There is no profit in rescue. When someone wants to adopt an animal from a small rescue, they often only see them at their best when they're ready for their forever home. But getting them there often requires endless hours of cleaning up diarrhea and vomit, shaving their matted fur, bathing them, flea treating, deworming, multiple vet visits, quarantining them from other animals, and so much more, all within our own homes and all while working full-time jobs. While it may be hard for you to imagine or empathize with the struggles of rescue, you have a window into the reality of it at your fingertips via social media. There are numerous rescues in the city that have Facebook pages. I highly suggest you follow them. There are also multiple group pages dedicated to helping rehoming and rescuing stray or feral cats. In just the past ten days alone, I've recorded seventeen posts for help with thirty-two cats on these pages. I did not search for the posts. They popped up in my feed organically. The pleas cover a wide range of reasons: hoarder houses, feral moms and kittens, families of deceased family members looking to rehome pets, strays left behind after evictions, owners who can't afford spay or neuter surgeries, and blatantly irresponsible pet owners who are uneducated and believe that these innocent animals should live their lives as nature intended. I've heard that. If you join these pages, you will see that the need is never ending. Up until this point, this crisis has not made its way to the city council level. But if the twelve people here with me today and the multitude of other rescues in the city that TNR cats decide to throw in the towel and stop rescuing, it would certainly become not only a city of Pittsburgh problem, but a major public health concern. To avoid this becoming much bigger, we need to ensure that each local rescue and individual rescuers have access to this program as well. Small rescues and individual rescuers are desperate for help. We cannot keep up with the demand for assistance from your constituents without you. We can conquer the problem together, and we are willing to do the work. We just need some help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Regina Suzanne Deloria.
Hello, my name is Regina Deloria. I live in the Perry Hilltop neighborhood. I'm an independent rescuer. I started doing rescue work when I was living in Mount Washington area and started noticing many stray and feral cats were on my own house. I personally rescued over most four hundred cats in the last five years. I'm not a rescue. I'm just a person. I want to make a difference in these cats' lives that didn't ask for this to be their life struggling to survive on the streets. The enormous problem is man-made from humans letting their cats reproduce from not getting their pets fixed. In the last three years, the majority of my rescues have been throwaway cats were dumped because of the COVID shutdown when people went back to work. If not fixed, just two cats and their offspring can produce tens of thousands of cats in their entire lifetime. The overpopulation of the Pittsburgh city streets have blown up to insane numbers the last few years. When the city's spay and neuter program halted, that had a horrific effect on rescuers to not have those resources and help that we needed to keep these numbers from growing even more. Because I'm not a rescue, I rely solely on donations and my own paycheck to fund all of my rescue efforts. Myself and other independent rescuers have gone into extreme debt to take care of the city's problem of the overpopulation of the cats on the streets. Please consider expanding the spay and neuter program to those of us that are working on making a dent in this massive overpopulation the city is dealing with, for us to be allowed more than those five spots per person. We are working to help combat this issue. We as rescuers volunteer our time and efforts in trapping these cats on the streets to get them fixed and vaccinated. Help with more spots and funding to get these cats fixed is what we need to help keep helping the city. We've been dealing with horrific cases of neglect and hoarding, trying to get assistance from humane officers. They're so overloaded with cases because the city needs more humane investigators. One or two humane officers for the entire city doesn't even scratch the surface. If we don't get assistance, these animals will suffer and die without the help that's needed from people who have the authority. I tried to get help from a humane officer in a really bad situation and didn't get any help whatsoever. There needs to be harsher laws against abuse and neglect. My rescue efforts, I have been verbally abused and threatened, and recently I was shot at three times by a random stranger who was prosecuted, and I could have been killed. Sorry. This is just from trapping on the public streets. We don't go onto anyone's property unless given permission. We risk our own lives just trying to save these animals. When you put ourselves in imminent danger of trying to save the lives of these cats on the streets and get them fixed, this is a serious problem that needs a hard look and needs better attempt to fix it. We should be working together hand in hand, the city and the rescuers, together to tackle this issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Krista Amari.
Hi, Krista Amari from Robinson Township. My name is Krista Amari. I run Kitty Queen Cat Rescue. Kitty Queen has been providing rescue services for Pittsburgh for nearly eight years now. From TNR services for ferals to intakes of strays to hoarding cases, Kitty Queen has a physical location, which we call a cat lounge, where forty to fifty cats are awaiting adoption at any one time. We proudly offer space on our adoption floor for many of the local rescuers to bring in their felines and often partner with other rescues to work on their difficult cases. This year alone, we have taken in over three hundred and fifty cats, and it's not even October. We receive no government funding and are surviving solely on grassroots donations from the kindness of our community members. It's a heavy burden to bear, especially if you think about the cost to vet, board, feed, and care for these special creatures. Kitty Queen Cat Rescue is also known across the area for intaking special needs cats, especially cerebellar hypoplasia cats, which comes from the lack of proper vaccinations. In rescue, we have absolutely seen an increase with these types of felines and others that have deformities from stray cat inbreeding, et cetera. There are often many extra costs associated with special needs cats, and a lot of these cases could be prevented with a comprehensive spay and neuter program. Nobody in rescue was or is profiting from the use of the vouchers for the city's spay and neuter program. In fact, it was the only reason most of us were able to take on so many cats in the first place. Without extending the program to allow rescues and rescuers to access more than five spots, you are greatly prohibiting how much we can provide the community. And if we don't or can't help cats, the burden falls on animal control and the city. The rising cost of surgery, the restrictions put on the spay and neuter program, and the ever-increasing wait to get surgery spots has been absolutely detrimental to all of the rescues and rescuers in the area, and we are starting to see it with the constant requests for help, the increase of strays in the area, and the unfortunate uptick of hoarding cases. There's absolutely no way we can keep up with the demand. In a twenty-four-hour period last week, Kitty Queen was asked to help with twenty-nine cats and kittens, and we couldn't say yes to any of them. I am a solution-focused individual and want to work with the city officials on an option to help both the city and the rescuers serving the area. Due to the severe lack of low-cost spay and neuter provider in the area, my team at Kitty Queen is working on opening a spay and neuter clinic right next to our adoption center at the beginning of McKnight Road. We are a hundred percent willing to work with the city of Pittsburgh to help extend the spay and neuter program and even help educate our community members about the importance of spaying and neutering our pets. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Jackie Cafaro.
Hi, my name is Jackie Cafaro. I'm a resident of Swissville, but I'm one of the co-founders of Cat Calls Rescue, a foster-based rescue that operates in the city of Pittsburgh in Allentown. We are one hundred percent donation and volunteer-based. We do not profit from animal rescue in any way, and we spend a massive amount of our time, energy, and finances to save and improve the lives of animals that have been failed by others. Large shelters have paid staff, millions of dollars in annual donations, city funding through animal control intakes, fleets of vehicles, and state-of-the-art facilities at their disposal. However, we, with the least resources, are being asked to do the most. Small and independent rescuers are doing the legwork. We are on the streets trapping cats, knocking on doors when we see neglected animals, informing the community of the city's spay and neuter program, and even providing community caretakers with food for their colonies. We do this as an unpaid service with very limited resources, and this is on top of managing all the cats and kittens we have in our care, which can be between forty and sixty cats at a time. Every day, we see posts on social media giving away unfixed, unvetted kittens, another accidental litter. We regularly get emails from colony caretakers overrun by cats and people with unfixed pets that have escalated into hoarding situations. The people we help are often in underserved, low-income communities. They are lacking transportation, finances, and basic information regarding affordable spay and neuter services. These are the places where cat populations are exploding. My peers and I are in a position where we either walk away, leaving animals to suffer and their humans to be overwhelmed, or we can take on the burden of financing and transporting these pets and community cats to and from spay and neuter surgeries. Apart from operating Cat Calls, I also run my own small business, and I work full-time. I have my own pets, foster animals, family, and friends. I try to spend time with my loved ones when I can, and I know this is the case for all of my peers that are here speaking today. Transporting individuals' pets to and from vet appointments on a daily or even weekly basis is not something myself or other rescuers can realistically do. We do not have the time, finances, or even the vehicles to accommodate this. Please help us implement a transportation system so that this burden no longer falls on our shoulders. The reinstatement of the city's spay and neuter program will help with the financial strain on rescues and pet owners. However, there's still a lot that can be improved. People who do not have access to computers, printers, or the internet are not able to complete the city of Pittsburgh vouchers. A solution such as mailing vouchers to city residents would not only spread awareness of this program, but it would also help countless individuals complete the vouchers and get their pets spayed and neutered before more accidental litters happen. I'm here today because of my love for animals and my desire to help the humans that care for them. But the burden of facilitating every aspect of care for these animals in our community is becoming too heavy to bear. I implore this council to consider the physical, mental, and financial load that every rescuer here faces daily, and to consider the health and well-being of the animals and individuals in our community that so desperately need our help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Carol Whaley.
My name is Carol Whaley, a city of Pittsburgh resident from Lawrenceville and a humane policy volunteer leader with the Humane Society of the United States. I'd like to begin by acknowledging the incredible work of the dedicated rescuers in our city who have been tirelessly advocating for the well-being of stray and community cats. Their passion and commitment is truly inspiring, and I hope you find that to be so. I am here today to advocate for crucial updates to the city of Pittsburgh's spay and neuter program and to ask for further discussion. The spay and neuter program is vital in improving the city's animal and human welfare. We are asking the city to continue to thoughtfully engage the animal welfare community, specifically those who are in the field doing the actual work, on long-term objectives and on short-term goals. And those short-term goals are as follows: Expand coverage of the spay and neuter program to include individuals and organizations who are investing their time and resources to help manage the stray and community cat population within the city of Pittsburgh through trap, neuter, vaccinate, return, or rehome. Provide transportation to qualified individuals who do not have access to reliable transportation. By coordinating transportation services, the city can ensure that the program is accessible to all residents regardless of their circumstances. Increase awareness of the spay and neuter program. Many residents need to be made aware of this valuable resource by adding announcements to city materials and mailers, creating billboards in high-density and low-income neighborhoods, and engaging with community leaders. We can ensure that more people know about the program and take advantage of its benefits. Training and enforcement. All city of Pittsburgh officers must undergo additional training on Pennsylvania Crimes Code Title 18 pertaining to animal abuse and neglect. Free training, free, by subject matter experts, has been offered to the Public Safety Department and should be accepted. By working together, we can develop comprehensive strategies to address concerns of public health and animal welfare in our city. Thank you for your attention to this critical matter. I urge you to support these suggestions as a crucial step toward creating a more compassionate and humane city for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Christine Luffy.
My name is Christine Luffy. I'm a lifetime resident of the city of Pittsburgh. I spent thirty-one years of my life as a city of Pittsburgh police officer with a focus on crimes against animals. In my time served, I arrested a ten-year-old boy and his eighteen-year-old neighbor with cruelty for tying a dog to a fence, dousing it with lighter fluid, and setting it on fire. I arrested a sixteen-year-old boy for shooting a cat with a pellet gun twenty-one times. I charged a fourteen -year-old boy for sexually assaulting a neighbor's dog in a backyard during an afternoon. I worked closely with the Humane Society of the United States to arrest a homeward man who was involved in fighting dogs in Pittsburgh and beyond in 2012. During the investigation, I discovered that this man was taking dogs that were offered for free to a good home. As soon as he brought them home, they were forced to fight one of his dogs. If the dog couldn't or wouldn't fight, he electrocuted the dog in his living room. This devil successfully fought and killed dogs since 1983 until we stopped them in 2012. He was sentenced to three and a half to six years in prison. I rescued my dog Effie that was almost starved to death. I arrested her owner. Her owner was successful in starving a dog to death three years ago. I have been in houses with forty to ninety-two cats inside. The conditions were horrendous. It was hard to breathe in these houses. In addition to handling animal neglect and abuse cases, I have filed countless number of city ordinance violations against people who had no proof that their dog was licensed. No vaccinations or identification tags on their cats that were allowed just to roam freely outside. Animal neglect and abuse is a crime that must be enforced. For twenty-five years, almost every crime involving an animal in the city of Pittsburgh was forwarded to me. In addition to this, I was receiving calls and emails from police officers throughout the state of Pennsylvania, giving them step-by-step instructions on how to handle crimes against animals. I was forced to leave my job on February 23rd, 2024. Now that I am not there fielding up to thirty calls and emails a day involving animal abuse, I still find myself constantly advising both the public and police officers on what to do regarding animals. I need to remind you that a police officer's failure to handle crimes against animals is dereliction of duty. You need to know that there is currently one humane officer in Allegheny County. This officer has only one-year experience under her belt. Police officers are going to have to handle these cases whether they like it or not. We need to be educated, or this is going to get worse. I realize that my departure has a trickle-down effect, and I live with that every day. Please do better.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Lisa Lundell-Lander.
Good morning. My name is Lisa Lundell-Lander. I live in Ross Township, not part of the city, but I'm here to represent myself as well as the other folks here from various rescues. well as the other folks here from various rescues. I'm the Secretary of Homeless Cat Management Team. I've been on the Board of Directors for 22 years. On average, at Homeless Cat Management Team, we fix 1,600 cats. We also have our sister organization called Pittsburgh Cat, where we adopt out about 300 cats a year. We've been in existence since 1998. I'm uniquely qualified to discuss the city's spay and neuter program, as I was involved in the original planning. That happened in 2011. Darlene Harris was the City Council President, and it was needed at that time, and it's still needed today. Currently, the city program only covers feral cats, but I understand in 2025, pet cats and dogs are going to be re-added back into the program. Kudos to City Council for reinstituting the entire program. These are much-needed neuter services to be provided to city residents. The citizens and their pets will continue to benefit from the program, as well as the city in general, to avoid having sick cats laying on sidewalks, kittens with goopy eyes running around people's yards, dogs hit by cars, and the like. Spaying and neutering is the single best thing a person can do for their pet or feral cat. The majority of my volunteerism with cats has been provided to city residents, surprisingly, but I live in Ross, pretty close. So they care for their own pets as well as feral cats. So having the ability to help people get their cats fixed as a rescue volunteer like I am is vitally important. Please ensure that there are provisions in the 2025 program that permit non-city residents who volunteer with rescues to help city residents. Many of the people that I help are elderly, can't or won't drive to harm, or animal friends are physically or mentally challenged. These residents need your and my help. Each dog or cat fixed is a success story. And when I do outreach events for Homeless Cat Management Team, I educate city residents about the spay and neuter program on the city's behalf. I always come prepared with the city applications, but advertising the spay and neuter program in, say, like, a tax bill can be helpful to city residents so that they're, they have that keen awareness of the program. Cat and dog overpopulation starts with people hoarding, backyard breeding, tossing unfixed cats outside. Let's fix the problem by making spays and neuters free and accessible to all city residents. Let's be the model city that fixes the dog and cat overpopulation crisis. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thanks very much. Our next speaker is Ikona Halmakina.
Greetings and good day. My title is Chief Ikona Halmakina, under Grand Inuit and Erypots Confederacy of Average and the American People, also known to most as Indians. This council may be comprised at a few different stages, yet City Council in 2011 adopted its Universal Declaration of the Rights of Human Rights to create and take meaningful steps to ensure people's human rights are protected. There is no time like the present to take steps towards making Pittsburgh a safe haven where human rights could flourish. I urge you not be complacent in the activation of these protections prescribed in the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. Out of the roughly 302,000 people in this city, you have an average of seven people who will come to City Council and speak on issues of concern consistently, attending these council meetings to express their concerns, to have dialogue with those who were elected to represent their interests, to be their voices, to hear their concerns, and take responsible action on behalf of the people that you serve. You rarely engage with these folks. You took an oath to work for the people. Please bring back equitable resources to our community. The amount of funds that are funneled through the hands of this council alone could dramatically change the narrative of poverty in this region. This city has a housing crisis, dealing with food insecurity, utilities are honorized and unaffordable. People don't choose poverty, they fall into poverty due to the poor mismanagement of funds. More resources are funneled to the care of animals than the people that you serve. Serve the people you were elected to serve. We, they deserve a society free from oppression, free from marginalization, free from discrimination, and yet free from colonization. And the consideration to truly, truly make Pittsburgh a city for all. I urge this council to take meaningful steps to make Pittsburgh a city for all and not per se. Thank you for hearing my words today. May they penetrate your mind, your heart, and your spirit to take action. Thank you, and lucky alaka in. Peace be with you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Alicia M. Finger.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Alicia Finger. I run Rescue and Relax in Edgewood, PA. I began my rescue work in early 2020 during the height of the pandemic when large shelters and clinics were closing their doors for new intakes. My rescue grew quickly, and I was able to establish a brick-and-mortar location in 2021, where the community is able to relax with our adoptable cats in a homey lounge environment. In our four years, we have rescued over 1,000 cats, with roughly 20% of those cats coming from the City of Pittsburgh. We typically receive about 12 requests for help each day, with the majority of requests asking us to take in multiple cats at once. Currently, we have 82 cats in our rescue, but often we care for up to 110 cats at a time. Our rescue operates entirely on volunteer efforts and donations from the community. We spend roughly $155 to fully vet an otherwise healthy cat, but the vast majority of cats that we rescue need a substantial amount of additional veterinary care. Our adoption fees are only $150 for a kitten, $100 for an adult, and $75 for a senior cat. I'd like to share a glimpse into one of the larger spay and neuter projects I've worked on within the city limits. Back in 2020, a neighbor contacted me while he was at work at the U.S. Job Corps campus on Highland Drive off of Washington Boulevard. There were two kittens stranded in a dumpster full of rainwater, and due to liability reasons, his employer wouldn't let him climb in to rescue them. I agreed to help, and my neighbor went through the chain of command to get me cleared to enter the Job Corps campus. I was shocked as I pulled up to the site. Cats were roaming the roads, lounging around buildings, and climbing in trash cans. I shared that their problem was much larger than just the two kittens I was there to rescue. They admitted it had been an issue for years and that the staff were not permitted to feed the cats. I offered to help if they could contribute towards the cost to TNR, but my neighbor was never able to convince his bosses to address the problem. Finally, in 2023, a post was shared online about a sick cat with damaged eyes that had been spotted at Job Corps. All of a sudden, they began to care about the issue. The director insisted that they could not contribute financially to the efforts, and while I had hoped that the students on campus could qualify for city vouchers, since this was a population of city cats, the students did not have utility bills or other evidence to validate their residency. Knowing the problem would just worsen, I rallied nine other rescuers to help with the work, and we estimated that there were well over 100 cats on Job Corps property. After several months, we managed to spay and neuter 47 cats on their campus, with only 11 that ended up being adoptable. Job Corps management became more and more restrictive as our work continued, despite the fact that we did it all at no cost to them. Since we received so many other requests for help, we ultimately decided to end our efforts at Job Corps. There are always other cats and pet owners in need of our services, so it didn't make sense to pour our time and resources into a community that didn't support our efforts. Council, please hear our speeches today and take our dedication and willingness to help to heart. Your residents and animals in your district need help. We would love to continue to help them, but we need your leadership to show support and reduce the barriers we face in providing that help. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final registered speaker is Tracy Schweitzer.
Good morning. My name is Tracy Schweitzer. I'm a lifelong resident of the City of Pittsburgh. For 36 years, I was a Pittsburgh police officer. In 2016, after many years of knowing Christine Luffy, I offered, because there were so many cases in my district, to help her whenever I could. She readily accepted this offer. In 2016, I jumped in on my first case with her and Brookline, a hoarding case that gave me nightmares for years, that included 45 dead cats and kittens and 41 rescued. At that time, I did not understand what involved animal rescue. There were multiple people that coordinated this, and Chris Luffy, of course, handled it flawlessly, ending with conviction, a well-deserved conviction. In my experience, in over 36 years of being a police officer, I was never trained on animal cases. We have an excellent animal control, but they do city ordinances. Police officers are required to enforce the misdemeanors and felonies involving animal abuse. However, this lack of training, a potential liability for the City of Pittsburgh, must be addressed. For almost 20 years, I heard in the academy to new recruits and current police officers getting updates, legal updates, "If you have a problem with animals, just call Luffy. She'll handle it." She was the only one. When I started helping her, I immediately felt overwhelmed. We handled many, many cases together. In this time, we had assistance from other police officers, but they did not know what to do. This is absolutely a training issue that must be addressed. The last administration of the police was trying to form an animal task force to train officers in every district on every shift and to train other officers to enforce these laws. Nobody wants to see abused animals. Many of these cases that I've worked also involve people, vulnerable members of our society, children and elderly people, who were also affected by hoarding, neglect, abuse. Animal abusers are the worst kinds of people. The law enforcement must be trained and enforce these laws. It has to happen. Animal abusers hurt people. They're part of what's called a homicidal triad, where we have serial killers and mass murderers who are known animal abusers in their youth. If these issues aren't addressed, not only do these animals suffer, but eventually people will suffer as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Having exhausted our list of registered speakers, we will now take comments from those in the audience wishing to speak. Are there any speakers wishing to come to the podium? Please approach the podium.
I'd like to state for the record that I signed up four times to speak, so.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Lydia Swanson. At just 19 years old, while still an undergraduate at the University of Pittsburgh, I founded Oakland TNR Coalition, a nonprofit cat rescue organization. My journey began when I discovered a colony of stray and feral cats living near the dorm towers. What started with one colony quickly expanded to 18, revealing a serious and critical lack of resources in the community. When I reached out to city services, I was essentially told I'd have to take matters into my own hands, and so we did. Recognizing how unsustainable our efforts would be without support, we created our nonprofit rescue, entirely unpaid and volunteer-run to this day, that operates without government funding, unlike large shelters. Over the past five years, we've rescued more than 200 cats from the Oakland neighborhood alone and over 700 total across the City of Pittsburgh, including Shady Side, Bloomfield, Garfield, South Side, Allentown, and many more. Our efforts have saved the city upwards of $200,000, and we've done it without asking for anything. Unfortunately, we've been largely unable to utilize the city's spay and neuter program, as many of those we help are students and residents without updated IDs and therefore don't qualify for services. As a result, we've witnessed a troubling increase in abandonment and suffering since the program's restrictions were implemented earlier this year. This work has not come without personal cost. The emotional toll is heavy, and the financial burden is immense. We are all volunteers, many of us juggling multiple jobs to stay afloat, devoting what little free time we have to saving cats and improving the Pittsburgh community. Since the shutdown of the spay and neuter program, we've seen a heartbreaking rise of abandonment and suffering. Just recently, we rescued two cats that had been adopted from the shelter that's currently contracted with the city, only to be abandoned by a Pitt student living in the dorms back in May. One cat was found after months on the street. The other, Juju, was found in Shenley Park. Despite all of our efforts, Juju was too far gone. Her time on the streets were too brutal for a cat that had never lived outdoors. After holding her in my arms as she took her last breath, I was left with the unbearable sense of loss, a stark reminder of a broken system. Juju's story is not unique and reflects the harsh reality that we all face every day. This is the side of rescue that the public and people in positions of power very rarely see. This shelf in my home that is filled with urns and paw prints is a painful testament to the real lives lost due to systemic failure. If you have a sliver of empathy, I urge you to listen to our recommendations and work together with us to create solutions that will benefit both the people and the animals in the City of Pittsburgh. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, we will now move on to our standing committee's agenda. And we're going to take it a bit out of order and start with our Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee chaired by Councilman Mosley, Bill 889.
Bill 889, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an NFL Draft funding agreement or agreements with the Greater Pittsburgh Convention and Visitors Bureau, Inc., doing business as Visit Pittsburgh for the coordination of municipal, governmental, and other services required for the 2026 NFL Draft at a cost not to exceed $1 million over three years, plus the value of various in-kind city services.
Motion to approve. Discussion.
Second.
With discussion, Councilman Mosley.
Yes, well, representatives from Visit Pittsburgh and anyone from the administration, please come up to the table.
Good morning. Jake Pollak, Deputy Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget.
Good morning, Jared Bakker, President and CEO at Visit Pittsburgh.
Patrick Cornell, Chief Financial Officer.
Yeah, thanks so much for being here. Could you just give us a brief overview of the partnership between the city and Visit Pittsburgh that's encapsulated, you know, within the legislation that's before us?
Sure. So as you're all aware, and members of the public are aware, the NFL has selected Pittsburgh as the host city for the 2026 NFL Draft. I agree. That selection is, was based on a bid that was submitted by Visit Pittsburgh and in consultation and coordination with various other local and civic partners that include the city, the county, the Allegheny Conference, and other representatives of the corporate community, the SCA, and a long list of folks. As part of that submission, the group collectively identified both sources of direct financial support that would be coordinated through a subsidiary organization of Visit Pittsburgh to pay for costs related to marketing and other things of that nature. I'll let Jared speak to those exact details in a moment, as well as in-kind services by the public agencies and entities involved. That would include support from the city in the form of public safety and public work services. The exact plans for those services is not yet defined. That's currently under development by the host committee and its various subcommittees, which are actively planning for the safety and transportation needs. I expect that we will be back before council discussing those in-kind commitments sometime next year, but for the purposes of this stage, the mayor had committed to supporting a million-dollar transfer into that supporting a million-dollar transfer into that collective fund for what I'll call the "soft" costs. Because the city has been selected, we are therefore now coming to council for your approval and authorization to make that transfer into supporting the work of the host committee outside of the types of services that the city could directly provide. So I'll give it to Jared to further elaborate.
Certainly. Well, I think Mr. Pollak certainly did a great job of summarizing the background. To add a little bit more depth to the intent of the local host committee and the budgets that we are putting together is, you know, at the end of the day, this is very much an NFL event. The NFL takes on the lion's share of responsibility to organize the event. They also take on the lion's share of the cost. When we entered into conversations with the NFL early on, we were also entering into a competition, a competition to actually attract the draft to the city of Pittsburgh. There were several other cities who were also having those conversations with the NFL and will continue to do so, just because of the economic impact and the publicity that these types of events bring to the destination. And in the case of the NFL's draft, these are also, this is a very specific event that could go anywhere, to any city that wants to host it, including non-NFL cities. So to have the ability to put Pittsburgh in the forefront of that discussion was critical to us. In order to really achieve the outcome we were trying to achieve, in order to win this for the city of Pittsburgh and our entire region, we needed to go into it with confidence, exhibiting confidence to the NFL that the community was going to be able to deliver on everything that we said we were going to be able to deliver upon. Soon after, we, Mr. Rooney, started the conversations with the NFL and the other NFL owners, that was the first step in bringing the community together to put Pittsburgh in the running for the draft. After that, the NFL came to the city. After we said, yes, this is something we want to go after, they came to the city and said, okay, can you do it physically? From a logistical standpoint, we do have the infrastructure to host a very successful draft here in Pittsburgh. The second thing, and probably the most important thing to them, was does the city work together? Does this community come together to bring us all of the services and support that we're going to need to host an event of this size and scale in your destination? And I say that we were certainly successful in proving that. And a lot of that was down to the cooperation we have with the mayor and his team, with the county executive and his team, Rich Fitzgerald at the time, now on with county executive Sarah Anamorato, our business community, our tourism board, of course, and our Steelers. So it's been a really exceptional process so far, and we're looking forward to continuing that progress with everybody here. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I just want to, and I thank the administration, as well as Visit Pittsburgh, for the numerous conversations we've had over the last week, getting me up to speed. And thank you for your efforts of bringing what I think is a transformative event that can really reintroduce the Pittsburgh region to the world and have, you know, benefits that go on for decades beyond 2026. So that's the breadth and width of my questions for today. Back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Coghill, followed by Councilperson Charlin, followed by Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First and foremost, I want to congratulate you. Anybody who had anything to do with negotiating this, obviously the Steelers were to lead. But anybody had anything to do with it, this is monumental. It's going to be, we all know the economic impact it's going to have to the city and beyond the city, the region, probably all the way to Wharton, Steubenville, and any hotel space available. So congratulations for that. This is a huge event. Originally, when I got the news that we committed, the city of Pittsburgh committed to a million dollars, I was critical, right? And it wasn't because of the financial buy-in. It was because I found out from Julia from the TRIB, I'm on the phone, ironically enough, speaking to a constituent, telling her that, oh, it's going to be a few years before we get to pave your road, right? And then I get the news that we committed to a million dollars. This is the crux of the problem for me, right? It's about why after everything was done, on the NFL side, on the city side, on Visit Pittsburgh's side, why was I not briefed that I'm going to be asked to approve a million dollars? And why did I have to find out from a reporter? And so my natural instinct is to be critical about that, okay? I'm just like, what, wait a minute. We had no idea. I had no idea this was coming down the pike, right? So, okay, so through the critical stage, you know, I really needed to get some information. I want to thank David Morehouse and the Steelers. I want to thank Visit Pittsburgh. I want to thank Darren Kelly. I got to speak to a lot of people, and I got the information that I needed, okay? So that, again, was the reason why I was critical of this entire thing. From the get-go, every interview I did, any radio show I did, anybody I talked to, I had said, if this jeopardizes in any way, shape, or form the NFL draft, I will vote for it and quabble about the money later, okay? I made that pledge to the Pittsburgh Steelers, I will tell you, okay? At the time, it wasn't so, you know, it wasn't in the press so much at that time. But, you know, as we saw it kind of blow up, I, again, spoke to the Steelers, and I said, are you telling me that you feel that this could be jeopardizing just this back and forth? And it's really, I guess it's really the cloud of like, our governments aren't getting along, and we should all be embracing this, right? So I made the commitment early along to the press, to everybody I talked to, that I will be supporting this if it in any way jeopardizes this draft, okay? I still don't, I have a hard time saying that we're going to foot the taxpayer dollars, the million dollars, that I was blindsided by, me personally. I'm not speaking for other members. But so, through this, got a call from the Steelers, and you know, when one of the most famous people in the world are sitting with the Steelers, and they say, is this going to be a problem to the city, you know, for the draft? It has now hit the NFL's desk, and the air of it is not good. It's not helpful for anybody or anything. So I'm not going to bicker over the million dollars, I will tell you. I'm going to vote for this today. I'm going to vote for it Tuesday. But I want a commitment, whether it be from you, Jared, whether it be from the administration, that we try to find different avenues, different buckets of money that we could hopefully refund our investment. Because we all know, and I'm not going to get into the questions as to in-kind services, estimated costs, and what kind of revenues are we going to get, I'm not going to get into the weeds with that today. I'm just here to state my, you know, the reason why I was upset is because of the way I was informed, okay? And I have to explain, I got no heads up on anything. So through my conversations, again, with, you know, the Pittsburgh Steelers and you all, you know, I've come to know that this really is bigger than city council. This is bigger than the mayor's office. This is bigger than the county executive. This is a huge event, the biggest event we could possibly attract to Pittsburgh. I, far be it from me to get in the way of it. So I am committed to vote for it today. I hope other members will vote for it today, and I hope they will vote for it on Tuesday. But I do want a commitment that we can talk about other avenues. And Jared, I want to thank you for the conversation we had today. And I think one thing is very important to me, it was very important to me, and maybe it will be to other members as well, and to the public, is we talked about the million-dollar commitment, right? We know there's going to be in-kind costs. We know we're going to have, you know, paramedics, overtime, police, and God knows how many other different costs coming in. You stressed to me, and I'd like you to stress to members now, that if we so choose, after we pass this thing and erase the air of suspicion that Pittsburgh is battling with, you know, everybody on this and trying to make this hard to go through, that you said that we could, if we so choose as council, direct that money, whether it be to events in our, one of our districts, whether it be to simple as, you know, refunding the costs that we're going to have for overtime and everything. Is that correct? Can you tell me that?
So, and thank you very much for your comments. You know, what we discussed is that there's opportunities to work with you and with the administration to make sure that those funds are spent in a way that services the city of Pittsburgh and your constituents in the best way possible. There is going to be a lot of need from a public safety and a public works perspective, as we know. And my comment is, or was, that if we can use those funds to support those investments for the city that will be able to help us deliver the draft, then we'll work with city council to figure that out. On the community effort, one of the things I mentioned was that we've seen other cities, and we don't have this in our plan yet, but we've seen other cities have some kind of a grant program that's established for neighborhoods. And I said, one of the things that we could do, and this is outside of the city's commitment, this is something else we would want to take on in addition, is we could come up with a grant program for every district in the city so that you could activate something in your neighborhood, so that everybody can really have an impact or have some kind of an experience related to the draft. And I think that's important. I think it's important for all of our communities to really feel like they're part of this. I also mentioned that there could be some opportunities for us to come out and have some educational sessions throughout all of our communities to help all of our businesses really understand how they can maximize their impact from the draft. So, and those are outside of the commitment for the city. These are above and beyond, like, what else can we do for your neighborhoods? But my comment to you is, after we hopefully pass this resolution, is come back to the table with you, with the administration, and talk about how those funds could be committed. We need a lot of support in public safety and public works, no doubt about it. So if that's how the city feels like those funds are best spent, then we'll figure out a way to do that with you.
That was very important to me. And, you know, the problem was, I had no clue. You know, my initial reaction was, why doesn't Visit Pittsburgh foot the million dollars, right? Not knowing that you're already in for two, two and a half million, whatever you're in for. So Jake, do you want to speak to that, why I didn't have any information on this thing when we got to this point, so I could be clear with my constituents, my obligation to them, first of all, and to the press and to everybody?
It was my, well, it was my understanding, frankly, Councilman, and if this is incorrect, then I acknowledge that, that as a SCA board member, speaking to you specifically, that there had been a briefing for SCA board members about this at the time of the application. So, again, to the extent that is not accurate, then I acknowledge that misunderstanding. But in a broader sense, you know, I think that the commitment of the administration through the bid process was to put forward this proposal, right? In any instance where the administration is similarly making a commitment of that type, it's explicitly stated and understood in any letter or agreement that we, it wouldn't be an agreement, but in any proposal we would put forward, that those commitments are subject to authorization and approval by council, that the mayor cannot unilaterally make a commitment of that type. So we viewed this legislation as the opportunity to have that conversation.
Just answer me this. In your eyes, should you have consulted with us after the agreement? I don't expect to be in the negotiations. That, that's all good. But once the administration committed to the million dollars, in your eyes, should you not have had conversations with us before the announcement? Is that irresponsible in your eyes, or not?
Frankly, Councilman, I think in the course of the business that we do, weekly in authorizing agreements of this type, it did not appear to me to be something that was out of the ordinary.
Well, you know what's out of the ordinary? All the attention around it, okay? This should have been squared away with council, and maybe it should have been Visit Pittsburgh. I don't know, you know, let me ask you this. Did anybody say at any time, that's great, everybody's on board. Oh, by the way, did anybody ever talk to the people who have to approve this money in order, before we announce this thing, so we could do it confidently? You don't have to answer. I don't even care. To me, that was irresponsible, and quite frankly, perplexing to me, it really is. And that's why I was critical. And that's why I came out and I was like, what the heck is this, right? So, anyway, I'm going to wrap it up with this. My message to the Pittsburgh Steelers is this. I gave my commitment to them to vote for this if they were to interfere. They've sent me the message that this is interfering, just in the way of, I don't believe the million dollars is a make or break deal, I will tell you, but it interferes in the way of public perception. And that is very, very important in this. When you have a mega, mega company like the NFL throwing an event in our city, one, the biggest one we'll have ever attracted, they don't want to hear it. They don't want to hear about infighting with government. We're at this point, because we weren't informed, and I'm not fighting about it anymore, but my message to the Steelers is this, you know, there is no bigger fan for the Steelers than me, okay? I know what they mean to this region. I have relatives and very good friends working there, ones that we all talked to over the last couple of days, right? I was a roofing contractor, believe it or not, for Dan Rooney, long, long time ago. They're the classiest, our best business, our best marketing tool, and this is going to be marketing on steroids. So I promised them I would not get in the way of this. I trust their judgment completely. I will not get in the way of this. I will be voting for this money, but on the caveat that we're going to talk about how that money, where that money is distributed, and as to maybe we can get help to foot the bill as well, after we pass it, to eliminate that cloud. So that's my message to the Steelers. My message to the NFL is, there's no doubt about it. We want you here. We welcome you here. We are looking forward to this event. Pittsburgh is the world's capital for football, as far as I'm concerned, and the Pittsburgh Steelers are. We look forward to this. We're going to throw a party like no other. I have complete confidence in Visit Pittsburgh as to what, how you're going to handle things, especially if you're going to be talking to us now, I hope. And, you know, so, so there is no doubt about it. This event is going to go off. There's not going to be any resistance from me. I'm excited about it. I know the economic impact. I know what the NFL, the kind of show they put on, and I'm looking forward to it. So I would hope my colleagues will put an end to any suspicion that governments are fighting about this, because I'm not fighting about it. We may have to talk about where the money goes and how it's spent, the million dollars that we're committed to, but that's it for me. So I wholeheartedly support it. I expect better communication in the future, Jake. I do. This is unacceptable for me. So that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilperson Charlin.
Thank you. So I am excited we're going to host the draft. I think it's going to be an awesome opportunity for the city, for the region, for the state. You know, I'm a big football fan, big sports fan. I also love a party. I think that's what this is. I think this is, you know, our opportunity as the city to show what we're capable of and what we can build here and how Pittsburgh does it. So I'm excited for that. And I know that with our bid package, one of the things that we wanted to highlight was the ability of the sports teams, the private sector, and the public sector to all work together, you know, kind of in the spirit of Mayor Lawrence and the original, you know, concept for the conference, and why we all worked together and rode together in the same direction here. And I want to honor that and want to respect, you know, that spirit that we were able to sell to the NFL and that they were able to say, you know, that Pittsburgh's the place that we want to showcase the draft here. So I'm, you know, could not be more excited about what this is, what this, you know, commemorates, and what we can do to build in the future here. But I do, you know, do have some concerns here. And I want to thank Jared for meeting with us this morning to talk through, you know, my understanding of where the money was going to go. You know, and I don't fault Visit Pittsburgh for this, but when we learned that we were going to be spending a million dollars, you know, I learned, you know, as Councilman Coghill said, I learned from, you know, Legisstar and from our Julia from the TRIB, who was able to inform me of this. You know, and I thank her for her great reporting on here. It's been pretty eye-opening. But that conversation should not be coming, it should not be coming in articles that I'm quoted in. It should be coming from the other side of the hall. And, you know, I just am curious, like, do you guys not feel the need to inform council of something like this?
Well, we did discuss, as we discuss most upcoming legislation, in our regular conversations with the council leadership. I can't recall exactly when this item was first addressed. I acknowledge that we did not discuss this one directly with other members after the legislation was sent over for introduction, as is our normal procedure. We reached out to Councilman Mosley as chair of the Committee of Jurisdiction to brief him on it prior to introduction and then consideration.
Sorry, I want to stop you here. Chair, can I have interrogatory?
Absolutely.
So, ah, sorry, that's a tough word for me to say. Councilman Mosley, you and I had spoken after this was introduced and after you did an interview, and I believe that what you said to me was that the media, the administration told you the media got away from them, and you were briefed after introduction, correct?
I had a detailed briefing afterwards.
Correct, okay. And Council President Lovell, I believe that you told me that you found out a week before introduction that this was going to come, right?
Yes, sorry. Yes, Director Pollak brought it up at our, at our leadership meeting.
Oh, so a week before. So is that enough time for us to get our head around what's going on here?
In this instance, where I believe that the content of the legislation is straightforward, I believe so. But I guess that's for your judgment to decide.
Yeah, I mean, you know, wouldn't it be standard protocol to have a briefing or discussion beforehand, you know? beforehand, you know?
For a million dollar allocation, that would be relatively rare.
So it is not the million dollar allocation that is, you know, and the million dollar allocation is what we're voting on today. But I'm looking at the financial impact statement here. You have listed as departments that are going to have to pay additional staff time are the mayor's office, Office of Management and Budget, IMP, Finance, PLI, Public Safety, Public Works, and Parks. So it's not just a million dollars that we're going to be putting into there. There's a, there's a huge additional staff increase that we're going to have to, you know, to expense here. It's not just a million dollars that we're paying. That is what we're voting on today, but for the draft, we are, we're paying a lot more than that.
I don't, I don't dispute that, but we don't know those costs yet as those plans are not yet fully developed. So I expect, as I said earlier, that there'll be much further need to discuss those larger expenses as the plans for the actual operations of the draft event advance. So as we get to the point where we are, we have a clear picture of the public safety impacts, by which I mean the, the need for public safety services to, beyond the normal levels to support draft activities, for example, or the other ancillary impacts, then that, those would be, I think, of a character and a level that would warrant further discussion. As this legislation was authorization for the transfer of funds to support the general operations of the host committee, we, we don't have answers, complete answers to those other questions yet as we're more than a year out, pretty much a year and a half out from the event. So we would not have been able to address those questions yet.
So as the bid was put in, you know, the bid which included the fact that we were going to commit from the city, you didn't feel that it was necessary to, to have a discussion with us on that? That you, you felt that you could enter into an agreement before coming to council?
We didn't enter into an agreement. As I said earlier, the, the commitment of-
Sorry, you could enter into a commitment, yeah.
But the commitment of the administration was to support the allocation of a million dollars as the, under city law and under the Honorable Charter, obviously the administration can't do that unilaterally. So we always make any commitment of that type conditional on approval of an appropriation by council, which we're seeking now. It is in essence a commitment by the mayor to put forward legislation of the kind we're discussing here, which is at council's discretion to approve or not.
So Jared, we had a good conversation this morning, and you talked to me about how when Visit Pittsburgh put in the bid, you had to go to your board first to discuss this beforehand. Can you elaborate a little bit on how that process would work?
Yeah, so that's our internal process. You know, as we were putting the bid together, it was about going to various stakeholders within the community and saying, look, we have to prove to the NFL that the, that the city, the county, the business community, the tourism board and so forth, all of the organization, organizations I mentioned earlier, are going to come to the table with a commitment for verbal skin in the game, so to speak. So one of the things that we were asked to do was consider a $2 million contribution to the overall fund, which we said that we would certainly consider. We take that decision to our Board of Directors. Our Board of Directors then, of course, has to approve that, and then it's our Board Chair who, who signs off on that. So it's, it's, it's a process that we go through. Every, every organization, of course, is different in how they process, but that was, that's how we approached it.
And it's, you know, it's a matter of respect to make sure that your board is aware that they're going to be asked to, to pay this expense beforehand, you know, and I fully understand that. So, you know, again, because we didn't have the opportunity to find anything out from the administration, you were more than willing to meet with me this morning, had conversations with Mr. Morehouse yesterday, met with, many conversations with President Kelly about what this could look like from a labor perspective. But we also reached out to Detroit because we wanted to talk to them about their experience. And Councilman Cogell and I had conversations with, with the council over there about how that exactly went. Because we're hearing, you know, I think that the numbers aren't exactly finalized, something about 150 million to $250 million impact for the region. One of the major differences between Detroit and Pittsburgh, though, is that Detroit didn't have to pony up cash upfront. Director Pollak, why do you think that we need to pony up the cash upfront where other cities did not?
I can't speak to the composition of their host committees or their host committee budgets, or the discussions that happen among the participants in those host committees. The commitment of a million dollars by the administration to pursue this authorization was a result of discussions by the various entities participating in those conversations, all of whom have made commitments to make a cash contribution. So the city's contribution, which I believe is the smallest of, of any of those entities, was to demonstrate that the city of Pittsburgh, like the other participating entities, has, I believe someone used the term skin in the game before, I apologize, I can't remember who. That was, oh, it was Jared, okay, thank you. You know, it was deemed by those participating in those conversations that that was the appropriate way to evidence as part of the bid, the collective commitment of all the parties involved. I don't, I can't speak to Detroit's strategy in assembling their bid and how they arrived at, at a different arrangement or composition of support. But I know that, I think our, the level of, of collective support that we evidenced in the bid was comparable to what other cities have in the past.
So, you know, I'm, I'm glad you bring it up, and you do mention that we have the, the smallest skin in the game in the bid. But we also have the smallest ability to capture revenue. So not as the city as a regional hub, but the city as, as an institution that we are stewed with, with a fiduciary responsibility of. We really only have the ability to capture revenue through the parking tax. There, you know, you have listed there that there will be an additional increase in earned income, payroll prep, and RAD. Could you explain to me how we're going to collect earned income, payroll prep, or RAD?
Well, we anticipate that, at least as relates to the days of the draft itself, that additional business activity would result in either additional hours worked or overtime, something of that nature, which would then result in, I agree, less direct increases in earned income and payroll prep. RAD, we experienced significant increases in our local share, the city's local share of RAD funds. Every time there are large events like this, I think we saw our normal monthly share of RAD funds double the month in 2023 when Taylor Swift's concert was here, for example, because sales tax had a spike in that month. And so we would anticipate that for an event of this scale, which will be significantly larger than that, that we would similarly see a, a lift in, in that revenue. But I do agree with you that the parking tax is the only direct rather than induced tax revenue source.
And, you know, so we're, we're a cash-strapped city and, you know, which is the difference between Detroit. Detroit's actually operating at, they're much better, they've managed their money a lot better than we have. You know, again, not pitching in, but one of the other concerns about Detroit is that their overtime from public safety was largely financed through Michigan. Michigan paid for the overages there. Do we have any sense of understanding if Pennsylvania's going to help us out with this? Or are we going to, you know, we talk about skin in the game, that's, that's a, you know, that's our skin in the game, is we're going to, you know, we, we don't have the, the money to pay overtime, we don't, we don't have the officers, the firefighters, the EMS that we're going to, going to need for this. How is, how, how are we going to be backfilled? How are we going to be made whole?
We don't have a firm sense of the level or form of the state's financial commitment yet, but I, we, they are deeply involved in the conversations at this point. And like the other governmental and private sector or civic sector entities, a willing and enthusiastic partner in these conversations. I do and fully expect that they will participate in the efforts around public safety, whether that be in reimbursement for costs. We incur, I, I'm sure that the state police, for example, and other state agencies will be part of the comprehensive response. So, so I'm confident of the state's commitment to participating in shouldering both the work and the costs of those efforts. But again, we are not yet at a stage in the process where that has been, you know, fully defined. So I'm, I'm not concerned that they won't have a level of engagement and support for this effort that is, you know, not the, not equivalent to or similar to what other states have done. We just simply don't have that finalized.
You know, so one of the other very important points, you know, as the district that I represent, we have business districts that, you know, could, could certainly use a, a boost here, and the draft could be really beneficial to them. But, you know, I did talk to Detroit about that, and essentially there is a, an idea that the draft kind of wants to keep all of their economic revenue in the same location. And talking to the members from Detroit, there really wasn't an impact beyond the, the footprint there. The Detroit did work with some small businesses to get them, you know, pop-up locations within the, the draft footprint. The vast, the vast majority of them that were in that footprint lost money. If you are a steakhouse from a different part of the city and you're asked to run a pop-up somewhere else, you're, you know, this isn't your business model, this isn't where you, where you succeed. You know, additionally, your ability to, to scale as a restaurant, and my, you know, my background, since most of my twenties, working in, in restaurants, you, you can't scale to infinity in, in restaurants. You can, you can't build a second kitchen, you can't build a second dining room, you, there's, there's a cap on how much money that you can make. And I am deeply concerned that we are only going to be benefiting a small number of, of restaurants that, you know, again, I, McFadden's can only put so many people in, in McFadden, Southern Tier can only put so many people in Southern Tier. And, you know, I, I do appreciate having conversations with Jared about what we can do to work with small businesses and make sure that they're, they're prepared and they can figure out how to, you know, get, get some of the attention here. But I, I really want to thank President Kelly, who has helped me and was able to talk with me this morning and made a commitment that we will have, have regional events. We're not sure exactly what, what they might be. We're, we're talking job training or flag football, or, you know, business-led events in, in District Three, making sure that this is not something that only benefits a small number of businesses in the city, which has so far not happened in other draft events. So, you know, I, I will support this with, you know, with President Kelly's support here and, and his agreement and his, you know, the fact that I can trust him here. But I'm, I'm really not happy with the lack of communication, the lack of, lack of preparation coming from the mayor's office. I, I don't understand what we need to do to get you to, to pick up a phone and call council. So that's, I think, all I have to say today, but, you know, I, I hope that you can do better.
Councilwoman Gross, followed by Councilperson Warwick.
Thank you. Well, I have a significantly different attitude and tone, I think, than my colleagues, and I want to thank you for your hard work in bringing this tremendous event that I have to admit I was kind of clueless about. I did not even understand that these things happened in other cities. I didn't know how big they were, and now I do. And so I appreciate, I appreciate that. I was also a little surprised when I saw the price tag, but I do understand that this is a collective pot that others are going to be contributing to. I do understand that the most recent NFL draft was in Detroit and that it was celebrated as a tremendous success at something like $200 million of revenue for the city or region, and that there was $12 million spent out of their collective pot, I think, vaguely. But let me just kind of throw that back to you and ask you kind of like, how much money will this host committee be needing to spend? And then kind of how do you see, help me understand how that works?
Sure, I can take that if you'd like. So thank you very much, and thank you for your kind words. So as I mentioned earlier, when you think about the NFL draft, it is very much an NFL event. So a lion's share of the work and the financing comes from the NFL. But to the councilman's point, their concern is the draft footprint. So what's happening on the stage, what's happening in the fan zone and, and other parts of-
Certainly, like Kenny Chesney concert would be concerned about what's happening at, at the concert and the sound system, but, okay, so that's fair. So what does the host committee do?
So the host committee's perspective is we care, and, and I don't want to say that the NFL doesn't care, they do care, but their focus from a, a planning standpoint is the footprint. That's where the city and all of the local partners in the host committee come in to make sure that the rest of the, of the region is, is, is involved and benefiting and so forth. So the local host committee, our goal, our target in our bid, and, and Mr. Pollak mentioned this before, is the fact that this is a, a competitive bid process. So we have to put together a pitch that we think the NFL is going to be happy about over all of the other cities who are going after the same piece of business. So we-
I thought we already, so I must be, I must be not understanding what's happening.
Sure.
Haven't we already succeeded in the pitch?
We did, and we won the bid, yes, yes, yes.
Okay, okay, so let's just move forward from now.
Okay, so the $11 million was the target that we set for ourselves, say, this is what we want to, this is what we want to put aside to be able to deliver the best draft experience that we possibly can. So around the table then, we said, okay, Visit Pittsburgh will commit $2 million, which we did. The county has committed $3 million. The city committed $1 million. And then the corporate community, led by PNC Bank and Mr. Demcek, said the corporate community will come together and, and contribute $5 million. So out of that, we said, okay, so we have all of the pieces that we need to put this bid together, we won the bid, and then, so that's, that's the funding that we have to work with.
Okay, so what will the host committee be doing? And how will they spend the, the money?
So that local committee, that's local budget, is all about making sure that the draft experience on the ground is exceptional. So that money will go into a number of different projects, including public work, street beautification projects, safety, public safety has to be a big part of that, making sure that when visitors are coming in and around the downtown area, that, that the downtown area looks the best that it possibly can. If there's closed storefronts, how can we seal, you know, cover those windows? If there is plantings that we can do, how do we do that? On the third day of the event as well, is what we call the Pittsburgh Celebration. So on the third day, round seven and eight of the draft, is typically when a lot of the visitors have gone home. They were here Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Saturday is the time for us to bring out the Pittsburgh, you know, the Pittsburgh community to really celebrate everything that's going on around the draft. So part of that money will also go towards that. And then also marketing. You know, it is, it is well-known that Pittsburgh is a football city. That doesn't guarantee that we're going to get three, 400, even up to 700,000 people here, so we have to set out a year in advance to make sure that we're promoting the NFL draft here in Pittsburgh. So some of that money will also go towards marketing. We have 11 other NFL markets within a close proximity of Pittsburgh. We also have 35 NCAA Division One schools within a close drive proximity of Pittsburgh, so that's our target audience. How do we get them to come to Pittsburgh and spend their money here in our local businesses? And to the councilman's point, even beyond that, as a local host committee, how do we get those people outside of the downtown area into all of the various communities so that they're actually have an economic benefit to, to communities outside of the central business district? So that is from a, a high level of the plan moving forward.
I, I want to follow up on that last part. I really like that idea that part of the marketing budget that the host committee would be spending this collective pot of $11 million on would be focused on our kind of more regional footprints. And it's reminding me of the light exhibit a long time ago. Do you remember the Carnegie Museums, this is before your time, I think, had a Van Gogh exhibit, but then it was focused on light, and there were other things that all of the regional museums did at the same time. And it was highly successful in getting our kind of general three-state area to spend like three days in Pittsburgh instead of just going for like one museum exhibit, right? And so the zoo had something and this, you know, every, every kind of cultural exhibit, cultural institution had something related to that weekend theme. cultural institution had something related to that weekend theme. So this is during the weekday, but it still is, like you said, an opportunity where we have so many people who are within driving distance, basically, of Pittsburgh, who could really be part of the people here enjoying, enjoying this event. So I really appreciate that. My other question, again, just so I can kind of frame my thinking and so that we can begin this process of working with city council so that we can figure out how to return the most benefit to specifically the city's residents, the city's businesses, and the city's coffers, because that's now the work in front of us, is help me understand the scale versus other events that the city has hosted in kind of recent years. So, we know, how many people came for the Taylor Swift concerts? Like, how many people were, like, visiting Pittsburgh, then?
Approximately 140,000 people.
140,000?
Over two days.
So this would be double or triple, or maybe even quadruple, right? We don't know, right? But do we, and so we're having a target of maybe, like, triple Taylor Swift or something like that?
It's very likely, yes.
Yes, all right. So I think that helps us kind of wrap our minds around, what was the experience for residents? What were the burdens, the downsides or the upsides? You know, the Taylor Swift experience, I think, was well-received by everybody, not just for the concert, but also for just the excitement and having lots of visitors in the city, and it all kind of went smoothly. We didn't hear as many complaints about garbage or bad behavior or anything like that, which we have with sometimes with other events. So that kind of helps us wrap our mind around. I do think we have the opportunity, working with the host committee, and again, participating with our contribution so that we kind of are all equals at the table. Thinking about proactively, what can we do in terms of, I think you mentioned, services to distribute but also manage crowds that size? So if the nearest thing we've experienced is going to be a third of this size, there really is a lot of, I think, of experience at this table for members knowing their own streets, their own businesses, and how they can both benefit but also minimize the risk. Some of us do host in our council districts. There are large special events. And some of us, like myself, have 15 years of closely documented feedback from residents, businesses, surveys, 3-0-1 calls. And so we can tell you in detail where the problems are and the nature of those problems. So I think that we can work constructively on both increasing the upsides, again, to city residents, to city businesses, and to city coffers, while also working together to minimize this risk. And so I really look forward to it. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilperson Warwick.
Thank you. Yeah, so, you know, I am a, I'm like a sports ball person generally in my personal life. You know, I mean, obviously, my family, we like watching, you know, Steelers games and whatnot. So, but at the same time, being, you know, like a sports sort of novice, I understand that this event is a big deal. And, you know, around the world, cities compete for big events like this, whether it's Paris wanting the Olympics or LA, you know, and they compete for these events, not just to raise the profile, like, we all know where Paris is, we all know where LA is, but because it is good for the city, right? It brings a lot of money into the city. And I also know, just from, you know, being a layperson, that cities that win big events like this have to invest to get ready for those events, right? You gotta, you're throwing a party, you gotta get ready for the party, and that's going to cost something. So, I, so, you know, with that in mind, now, now you did mention, do we have any estimates? And if we don't yet, that's okay, but maybe to know down the road. Do we have any estimates on how much, you know, we might be earning, we talked about the various taxes and parking and that kind of thing?
Patrick, if you want to say, we don't have concrete estimates at this time. That is something that we're actively working on, both analyzing the economic impact from recent hosts, and then interpreting how those general economic impacts would filter through our particular revenue structure, right, as others have mentioned, right? Detroit or Kansas City, they have different distributions of local governments with taxing authority and different rates, right? So we look at the economic impact of an event like this, and then can approximate from that what that likely translates into in terms of direct revenue. I don't know.
So Director Gola is digging into this with her team when they're analyzing revenues. You know, we typically do not include in any budget forecast things for exceptional circumstances or events that may not be consistent year over year. In this case, you know, next week, when the preliminary budget comes out, we will not see any increased forecast really related to the draft at this time. But we do know that it's coming. We think this is, you know, something that we are planning for now, a year and a half out. We have been planning, you know, even further than that. But we are keeping tabs on all the data that's coming in. We are working with the other former host cities to see what things look like in terms of sales trend and business data there, to see what we can kind of anticipate. I know that with respect to parking, Director Gola's team and Director Green's team in PLI have already started to put feet on the ground, you know, how do they make sure that compliance and enforcement is working? I won't spoil anything, but they are out and about on, you know, they will be out more this season with Steelers home games to make sure that all of our existing parking lots are in compliance, just to make sure that they are familiar with their processes and capacity as they move forward. So a lot of that will be still in the works, but we are not certain at this time, like Director Pollak said. But there is certainly work that we are doing to try and estimate and gauge it out.
Okay. I mean, I think that would maybe, just because we're having the conversation, I mean, so, you know, we know Detroit, you know, region made $200 million, but, you know, would be just since we're having the conversation to know how much, like, the city of Pittsburgh actually, you know, if there is, you know, some of this million dollars could be recouped, which I assume, hopefully, some of it will be. But it would be nice to know those numbers. So, and, you know, and obviously, we're providing in-kind services as well, so there's a cost to that. Do we know, and again, just, do we know how much the NFL is investing?
They do not publish their budgets, but we know it's considerably higher than what the local host committee is going to be putting forward.
Sure. And what was the whole, and the entire, can you remind me again, that was 11 million?
We raised $11 million.
$11 million, okay. And so this is like, the city itself is putting 1 million into that 11 million that's being raised by various organizations.
That's correct.
Yeah, I mean, that, you know, this is exciting, and I do like to hear about this, you know, more about the plans about, like, sort of spreading the wealth around to other neighborhoods, right? Like, I would love, I know I've got a football team in my district, there's other football teams around, I'm sure there's, like, cool stuff that can be done around that. And is, and also, of course, with transportation, you know, making sure, I'm sure that, you know, the South Side will have no trouble getting fans, you know, to come and enjoy the South Side. But other neighborhoods, maybe Squirrel Hill or whatever, you know, if there was just some plan to kind of let people know about the other fun stuff that there is to do.
If I may, that, you raise a really excellent point. One of the areas that the, again, multi-jurisdictional, multi-level coordination is happening on, and at this point, that's in an early stage of exploring and modeling, but we are, there is coordination between the city and the county and its various agencies related to transportation, as well as PENDOT, to better understand, you know, what are the traffic flow pinch points for an event like this? How do DOME, PRT, PENDOT, the Airport Authority, all of the various agencies that are involved in that, understand the necessities of managing what will be unique, you know, traffic patterns that, you know, aren't similar to anything we would normally experience? Even, you know, a large Steelers or Pitt game is the fraction of the size of what this would entail. So what investments are necessary and what plans are necessary to accommodate that? I think that the next phase in those conversations is, just as you've pointed out, what are, then, the transportation needs to move people into other parts of the city where they may be staying, where other events may be located? But the first stage in that work is just understanding kind of the demand-capacity management, and that part is actively underway.
Okay. And, yeah, and I would love to see, you know, as part of this, of the marketing is, you know, I don't know, like a guide, you could connect it with Pogo, like, you know, what are the, what are the cute spots, you know, Walnut Street, East Liberty, like, what are the cute spots around the neighborhood so that we make sure that we're really, like, feeding newcomers into, into all of our, Lawrenceville, Bloomfield, you know? At any rate, yeah, so, and just sort of in terms of the process, you know, of sort of, you know, finding out about the million dollars, I do, just for the, just for the public's sake, just kind of want to explain a little bit about how, how things work at the city, kind of between council and the mayor's office and the various departments. So, you know, we all have committees. I'm on the Public Works Committee, right? And I meet with the directors and, you know, DOME and DPW, and I go over the new legislation that's coming in. And, you know, if something pops up that's, you know, I, you know, recommend, like, say it's in Councilwoman Gross's district and it's something big, I say, hey, you may want to reach out, you know? And generally, I find that that, that happens. And that's always ahead of time, right? Meet every couple of weeks. And then, when it comes to finding out about new legislation, you know, we get an agenda. So, just to clarify, this agenda, it sounds like leadership was also brief. So this agenda was sent to us on September 13th with, you know, this piece of legislation in it. And so we had the information. But I'm not saying that all, and I don't want to pretend, like, I'm not, like, reading the agendas on a Friday night, but, you know, my staff does look at the, Councilwoman Gross does, and she reads the entire agenda the second she gets it. But, you know, our staff does, does look through and that, that type of thing. And so then it was actually introduced on September 17th, which I believe was the date of the TRIB article. So, I mean, again, I understand, you know, we like to have communication between, but I just want to clarify that, you know, council sees what's coming a few days before we get it. And, you know, and also, I want to say that council members do sit on various boards and authorities, including the Sports and Exhibition Authority, which I can't imagine that the Sports and Exhibition Authority was not involved in this particular event.
They were.
Right. So, okay, so, so, you know, I do have to say that I, I am, I am not one to shy away from a difficult conversation at the table. I like having conversations. I feel like it's more transparent for the public, you know? But I do also sort of understand the dismay of the NFL to kind of have this conversation happening and sort of putting a damper on what really should be a huge celebration, right, for the city, for the county. This is a huge deal that we've gotten the NFL draft. And I would actually sort of suggest to my colleagues that upon learning, whether, you know, for whatever reason, if you didn't know before, and I didn't know, right, about the million dollars, I'm going to admit, I wasn't, I didn't, I didn't read the agenda on Friday night. I didn't, it might have been worth it for my colleagues to have, make the telephone call and have the private conversation, to ask the questions, all of which are valid, just to, to avoid kind of putting what I feel like is sort of an unpleasant damper on, on something that, that we should really be celebrating. Like, this is super exciting, this is a huge deal. So congratulations to the city of Pittsburgh and the county and everyone. And again, I'll, you know, thank you for all the work that you put in and for, for winning this event. Super. And I'll be, now I have to find out what the draft is, like, what actually happens at this event. So that'll be fun.
Thank you. We're still in first round. Council President Lavelle.
Thank you. Quick thought suggestion. This would be a great time for the city of Pittsburgh to implement, fully implement a market-based revenue plan. And I will certainly follow up with you after this. I think this is going to be a 9-0 vote, so I don't want to belabor the point, but I do believe we should absolutely be looking at what those opportunities present ourselves moving, moving down the line.
Great suggestion, Councilman. Happy to discuss that further.
That's it.
Thank you. Any further first round? I'll just say for my part, I have had a lot of my questions answered, both at today's discussion and yesterday with the mayor's team during the council leadership briefing. I still have some questions. I would love, I'm going to vote for this today, I would love the opportunity to have further discussion. I'm not going to ask my questions right here before next Tuesday. Biggest issues that I have are, or questions I have, which I understand we can't fully answer at this point, are ensuring that the $1 million goes to something that will have a greater payoff than the event itself, that will be, you know, that will be longer lasting than the event itself, the benefits of the event, and in-kind services and contributions. I also have some questions about, you know, the, making our contribution both monetary and in-kind commensurate with what the county is putting in to, relative to the amount that they're going to be recouping and, you know, what we're recouping. So we'll save that for the conversation. I'll make myself available before Tuesday. It'd be great to talk with Visit Pittsburgh and the administration further on this. And I, too, have some ideas about how we can benefit neighborhoods in this, in this, from, not from attending an NFL draft, but previously from just, you know, other events I've seen in other cities and the way they've been able to make that work. So, thank you very much. Moves us on to second round. Councilman Mosley.
You know, again, I just want to, again, thank the administration and Visit Pittsburgh, you know, particularly Chief Cornell for, you know, answering my questions as well as, you know, in my conversations with Councilman Charlin and some of his concerns and questions, and be willing to answer those questions and allowing me to go back to Councilman Charlin, you know, with those answers, particularly around, you know, specifically how the city coffers would benefit, you know, from this. But also, you know, one of the things I found intriguing was, and, you know, I don't want to belabor, as we've talked about this for a long time, you know, we talked about, you know, the idea of the NFL doing legacy projects, you know, that would be longstanding, either parks or recreational kind of facilities and amenities that would live, you know, into perpetuity here in the city, those kinds of investments, as well as, you know, the minority business development program. And in Detroit, it was about $12 million went to minority business. Some of those were able to then procure larger contracts with, you know, with others. If you could just speak to those extremely briefly, I know we've really talked at length about this.
I'll be very quick and answer the second part of your question first. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that $12 million is accounts for the NFL itself's disadvantaged business procurement program. So that's, that's the understood impact, just to use Jared's terminology. The NFL official event area and the services and costs associated with it, there is a wider impact, in fact, from the, the set of community activities that occur outside of that footprint. I don't believe that we yet know that full impact. But yes, it's a priority of the NFL's and its procurement related to the draft to produce opportunities for women-owned businesses, minority-owned businesses, and other types of disadvantaged business classifications. Concerning leave-behind projects or legacy projects, that is, again, always part of the conversation with the NFL through its charitable enterprise or charitable arm to make community-based investments, usually around football, or at least in sports and fitness, in its host-city locations. We've not yet progressed to the point that we have, you know, fully identified what those opportunities might be. But we do expect, likely, in the form of investment in a recreational, you know, facilities and services, that there will be a valuable contribution made by the draft to our ability to provide those services to our youth, not just during the event itself, but well into the future.
Absolutely. Yes, again, I just want to thank you again and look forward to continue to work with the administration as well as with Visit Pittsburgh to bring, again, you know, really a generational event, you know, to the city that really, you know, can impact, as well as we talk about bringing stuff out into the neighborhood. So I think it's also not only opportunity to really reintroduce Pittsburgh, you know, to the world, but also reimagine, you know, what the NFL draft can mean for a city. So I think we have the opportunity to do both. So thank you so much. And that exhausts my questions and comments. Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Councilman Coghill.
Just, just, uh, I'll be really brief. Oops, sorry, thank you. I'll be really brief. Uh, we're going to try to get them through the tunnels, right? I mean, it could be part of the experience, right?
Absolutely.
We got the Fort Pitt and the Liberty Tunnels, and there's my district on the other side, so, and I was talking to Darren Kelly about this this morning, and he's committed to that. And I know he made the Councilman Charlin feel better about his commitments to, you know, getting, I know he's on the committee, I know he's not the only voice in the matter, but he carries a strong voice, so, so we're going to hold him to that.
Absolutely, Councilman. And I think one thing that is unique about Pittsburgh relative to other cities that have hosted the draft, right, and we say this about ourselves all the time, but it is true and, and no more true, uh, than in this sense, right, as a, a city of neighborhoods, right, in order to accommodate the large number of people who will be coming, we will, perhaps more so than a Detroit or a Kansas City, um, be relying on the wide array of neighborhoods, places to visit, business districts, to, to provide that welcoming experience for everyone. And that is a priority of the, it was a priority in the bid, it is a priority of the committee, and Jared's spoken to how we hope to achieve that. But yes, I, I firmly believe that the trip through the Fort Pitt Tunnel into the city will not be the only time.
It's so easy. I think I get here faster than any other member, maybe, maybe Mr., I don't know, but, uh, you know, I get here in, it's like six minutes.
Absolutely. And I'll reiterate the commitment that's been made.
Thank you.
You know, those, these, the community impact is, is absolutely critical. The impact on our minority and small businesses is also important. We've had quite a few meetings already with the Steelers and with the city and the county on what we can do to bring, not just bring them into a procurement process, but how do we help these businesses upscale? You know, when you're a small janitorial company or a catering company or whatever, doing your normal level of business, it is hard to, to ramp up for something like the draft. So, how do we help those businesses successfully do that so that they gain maximum economic impact? But it's true for all of our neighborhoods. How do we get people out into the rest of, of Pittsburgh to, to really celebrate this and feel like they're part of it? It's critical.
Absolutely. And, you know, I, well, I'm not going to apologize, but I, I feel bad about being critical about this whole thing to begin with, and I think rightfully so, because I felt blindsided myself. But beyond that, I will tell you, with my talks with the Steelers, you know, I can be critical, but I can also give praise where praise is due. David Morehouse told me that Mayor Ganey was instrumental in bringing this to town. In fact, he was, uh, exuberant about it, he was the biggest cheerleader about it, he made sure the doors were open and, you know, any cooperation, cooperation, you know, regarding the city of Pittsburgh was there. So, I want to thank him and the administration for that. You really got the job done, and I really appreciate that. Um, what were, what, my issues are secondary to, to the job that you did. So, um, again, the mayor, probably all counsel, I got, it was instrumental in this and did a really, really good job. So, I'm, I'm happy for that, and I know, you know, he's happy about it too. And I hope we can send a unified message today to not only the Steelers, but the NFL, that we're excited, we're on board, we can't wait, and we're going to throw one hell of a party here in Pittsburgh. So, thanks.
Thanks. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 889, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. Thank you very much. That moves us back to the top of the agenda, Finance and Law Committee chaired by myself, Bill 905.
Bill 905, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant payable in favor of Denton's, Cohen, and Grigsby for one-time legal services rendered for an amount not to exceed $42,570.90 over one year.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve? Do we have a second? Second, all those in favor of Bill 905, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 906.
Bill 906, resolution authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement or agreements with Spillman, Thomas, and Battle in an amount not to exceed $60,000 for legal services related to pending litigation involving city employees over one year.
An executive session was held on this bill. Do we have a motion?
There's a move. Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 906, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 907.
Bill 907, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Robert Furfer and his attorneys, Porta, Clark, and Ward LLC for a single payment in 2024 in an amount not to exceed $75,000 in full and final settlement of litigation filed in the Allegany County Court of Common Pleas.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion? An executive session was held for this bill as well. Uh, seeing no discussion, all those in favor of Bill 907, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 908.
Bill 908, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Jane D. Simone Esquire for arbitration services for an amount not to exceed $5,637.80 over one year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? And once again, an executive session was held for this bill. All those, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 908, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 910.
Bill 910, resolution, further amending Resolution 863 of 2018, effective January 1st, 2019, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and a 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and a 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Bus Rapid Transit by $249,377.16 and Increasing Complete Streets by
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 910, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 911.
Bill 911, resolution, further amending Resolution 886 of 2021, effective December 27, 2021, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capital Budget and the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2022 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Bridge Preservation and Restoration Fund by $28,050.00 and Increasing Swinburne Bridge by $584,500.00, $500.00, of which $556,450.00, of which is provided by the Federal Highway Administration and Pennsylvania Department of Transportation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 911, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to invoices. Do we have a motion on invoices?
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? So, uh, two notes on invoice, or one note for invoices this week. EMS has two invoices for Ford City Hose Company Number One, ambulance for EMS coverage reimbursements at special events, including Pitt football games, Pirates games, and concerts, that together, uh, total almost $6,000. Since they're invoiced for separate events, we do not require a waiver of the rules of council. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of invoices, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Invoices are approved. That moves us on to interdepartmental transfers. Do we have a motion?
To approve.
Second.
Discussion? I will note for interdepartmental transfers, um, there is a $500,000, um, finance request for interdepartmental transfer associated with the cost of ending finances, finance department's contract with Jordan Tax Services. Any further discussion on interdepartmental transfers? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, interdepartmental transfers are approved. That moves us on to P cards. Do we have a motion on P cards?
Motion to approve discussion?
Second.
Second, with discussion, Councilman Wilson.
Thanks, I have to call Director Paulak.
Morning. Good morning.
You mind introducing yourselves?
Uh, Jake Paulak, Deputy Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget.
Jennifer Olzinger, Chief Procurement Officer, Office of Management and Budget.
Thanks, uh, thanks for coming to the table. Last week, I awkwardly said there was a change to P cards, and, um, if you could just walk us through that, because, um, you know, I, I think I'm in the ballpark.
Yeah.
But I'm going to let you, uh, take the rest.
Sure. Thank you, Councilman, and thank you for raising the issue. Apologies, we, uh, weren't here last week to, to answer that question when you raised it. But you're correct in noting that, um, as we have adopted new procedures in reviewing P card transactions, um, since that topic obviously got a great deal of attention earlier in the year, one of the moves, which I've described before, that we've been making, particularly as it relates to costs in the Department of Parks and Recreation, because of the very unique nature of some of the services they procure, is examining whether there are providers, um, that while each individual transaction with them is perfectly compliant with the P card policy, um, we may, over time, be utilizing them with enough regularity, um, that it makes more sense for those, uh, con, those engagements to be under, uh, formal contract and paid through, uh, typical invoice. That is the case in the example of the puppeteer that you were, uh, asking about last week. Um, it's not the only instance in which Parks has been moving some providers that they had previously been paying for on an event-by-event basis via P card to having them under a standing contract if we know that we'll be utilizing them routinely throughout the course of the year. So, that's the, uh, the change in practice that you were commenting, or that you noted last week. Um, it's not a change in the P card policy itself because the policy, um, has not been modified. It's, uh, us ensuring, um, I guess, more fulsome compliance with even, also the spirit of the policy. Again, any individual transaction with that provider would be compliant with the terms of the policy itself, but this is a best practice, um, that we've now been able to identify those patterns through looking at the data in a different way and then move proactively to, um, have folks under contract where that's advisable.
Right. Well, thanks for, uh, explaining that, because, you know, as I worked through some reasons why someone would have a delayed payment that typically was paid on a P card, now I further understood that, that, uh, the department had, uh, now designated as, you know, professional service, and furthermore, they were, over the course of the year, they would be, we would be giving, um, we would be paying them, uh, $10,000 or more.
Mm-hmm.
But really, I think the window they were looking at is between $10,000 and $15,000. So...
Yeah.
Per year, so then, even though it would just be, you know, you know, I don't know, there's different payments to the individual talking about, but one was like for 300, and I think the other one was for close to 4,000. And so, I think just, there's multiple events that could happen, and so they're coming under contract with those small, you know, small operations, but still, um, they're being more specific in terms of who they're, um, designating as, they're, they're defining as professional services.
That's correct.
And, and then working to get them under contract.
That, that's correct. Um, that we are, um, and the department really is taking leadership on this with, and great credit to them, um, looking at those patterns of expenditure more closely and, um, establishing agreements with providers that they know they use on a routine basis to, to put, put that greater structure to it. Hopefully, we're also are able to accelerate the, um, completion of payment as well through that process.
All right, thanks for explaining that. I appreciate, um, you know, you all working through that, especially the department, because I know the big, and one of the big concerns was that, you know, professional services and, uh, and then also like consultants would, you know, be under contract instead of these kind of small payments, monthly, and so the more we can do that, the better that, uh, that speaks to the concerns on this side of the table. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilperson Charlin.
I just want to thank you yesterday, um, uh, and thank the, the Finance Chair, uh, Councilperson Strasburger, for having a training for us, um, you know, abbreviated training to, for us to kind of understand, uh, what our, um, P card procedures are and, and how that works, and really giving us an opportunity and a lot of time to ask questions, um, about how this process works and, and the benefits, why we should be using, um, P cards, uh, more frequently, and, you know, the interest we're able to, or the rebate, I guess, that we're able to get off of, uh, off of those payments, the expediency we're able to, to pay for that. And it greatly helped me with, um, my level of comfort, understanding, um, these, you know, this payment method. So, I, I really want to thank you for that, and I'm, um, you know, I, I think that my comfort now is that the fraudulent payments and the, the doctor time sheets, that was not a problem of the P card system, that was a problem with other internal controls. Um, and I just want to thank you for, you know, giving me that comfort. I'll be happy to continue voting for, um, for P cards moving forward.
Happy to do so. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of P cards, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? P cards are approved. Thank you very much. That moves us on to Public Safety and Wellness Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill.
Bill number 882, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of public safety to enter into a license agreement or agreement with the University of Pittsburgh in an amount not to exceed $10,000 over 10 years for space provided in the Cathedral of Learning for the replace, for the placement of public safety equipment related to radio communications and other community safety efforts.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 882, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, Bill 883.
Bill 883, resolution authorizing pursuant to Chapter 210, Acceptance of Gifts to the City of the City Code, the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget on behalf of the Department of Public Safety to receive a donation from Public Safety Dogs, Inc. of a fully-trained bloodhound valued at $10,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 883, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, Bill 884.
Bill 884, resolution authorizing the mayor, the director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with Norfolk Southern's Safety First Grant for the purpose of receiving grant funds in the amount of $15,000 to purchase law-owned coronated firefighting phone.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 884, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, Bill 885.
Bill 885, resolution authorizing the mayor, the director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's Highway Safety Project Grant for the purpose of receiving grant funds in the amount of $616,188.18 for enforcement and public education around impaired driving, aggressive driving, occupant, occupant protection, and pedestrian safety.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 885, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, Bill 886.
Bill 886, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Pulse Point Foundation in an amount not to exceed $6,000 for the city's share of the license fee for the annual renewal of the Pulse Point Emergency Services application.
Motion to approve.
Your second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 886, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilperson Warwick.
Bill 912, resolution authorizing the mayor, the director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Automated Red Light Enforcement Program for the purpose of receiving grant funds in the amount of $453,657.21 to replace the traffic signal at the intersection of the Boulevard of the Allies and Ward Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Councilman, Councilperson Charlin.
Uh, yes, and I think this might be a question, uh, Councilperson Strasburger, that you can answer. Is this, this red light enforcement grant, this is the kind of money that we can expect that we'll be paying into the pot once we get our red light, uh, program operational?
Correct. So, the Arlie program has been operating for many years. Other cities' red light programs pay into a state fund, ours will as well. We will then be, just be contributing to a fund that other cities can take advantage of. Already, I think there are six or maybe eight intersections we've already paid for, full restoration for using these types of grant funds. These are more, I'm really happy to see it.
Fantastic.
Uh, I think I might have, um, I know that Councilperson Warwick had her, her hand up. Did you want to say, okay, you're going to answer the question? Uh, Councilman Coghill.
Yeah, so, this is a result of your passing of legislation? No, okay, so this is funds we would have gotten anyway through that same program, but, No, okay, so this is funds we would have gotten anyway through that same program, but it's even better yet because now we have your.
Whatever proceeds we collect.
We'll go toward what we're.
Minus the cost of operating the program locally, we'll go into this pot of funds that we and other cities will continue to take advantage of. The pot will just grow.
That's great. It's a nice chunk of money, so congratulations.
Congrats to the council member whose district this is in, I guess, not sure who's it is. Okay, any further discussion on bill 912? Seeing none, all those in favor of bill 912, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, bill 913.
Bill 913, resolution authorizing the mayor, the director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Automated Red Light Enforcement Program for the purpose of receiving grant funds in the amount of $545,267.58 to replace the traffic signal at the intersection of Brownsville Road, Beck's Run Road, and Biscayne Drive.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of bill 913, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, bill 914.
Bill 914, resolution authorizing the mayor, the director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's Green Light Go Program for the purpose of receiving grant funds in the amount of $2,322,564.21 for intersection upgrades at five locations in the city of Pittsburgh. The grant requires a match from the city of Pittsburgh in the amount of $580,641.06 for this stated purpose for a total project cost of $2,903,205.27.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
I just wanted to say that one of the intersections that we'll see upgrades because of this grant win is in the district that, well, in a district that Councilman Mosley and I share at Wilkins, Beachwood, Linden, where just last year a pedestrian was killed. It's been a huge priority to fully upgrade that and make the crossings much safer and turning lanes safer and everything. So really wanted to commend Domi and Domi's leadership and staff for going after this grant and finding the matching funds for it. And I know other intersections will benefit from this as well, but I'm really happy to see that one moving forward. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of bill 914, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, bill 915.
Bill 915, resolution authorizing the city of Pittsburgh, the director of Public Works and the director of Finance to enter into an easement agreement or agreements with Duquesne Light Company to provide, install, use, own, operate, maintain, repair, renew, and finally remove one light pole and one anchor along with 50 feet of vegetation clearing rights located upon city-owned property along South Broadock Avenue in Frick Park at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of bill 915, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, bill 916.
Bill 916, resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design, final design, utility, right-of-way, and construction phases of the Swinburne Bridge Project and providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $15,400,000, an increase of $491,000 from the previously passed authorization, reimbursable at 95% and a municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed $16,250.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to bill 917.
Bill 917, resolution providing for an agreement or agreements with S.A.I. Consulting Engineers, Inc. for costs associated with the CBD Signals Phase Four Project, providing for payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $575,887.64, an increase of $0 from the previously passed authorization, bill 552 of 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of bill 917, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation, bill 918.
Bill 918, resolution providing for an agreement or agreements between the city of Pittsburgh and Allegheny County for costs associated with the Armstrong Tunnel Project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $1,262,395.16, an increase of $249,377.54 from the previously passed authorization of bill number 760 of 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of bill 918, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, bill 919.
Bill 919, resolution providing for an agreement or agreements with KCI Technologies, Inc. for costs associated with the 28th Street Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $1,016,932.87, an increase of $44,831.94 from the amount previously authorized by resolution 668 of 2023 to add additional funding for preliminary engineering phase of the project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of bill 919, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, bill 920.
Bill 920, resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Pittsburgh and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an amended professional services agreement with Kim Lee Horn for work on the citywide intelligent transportation systems project at a cost not to exceed $313,561, an increase of $14,000 from the previously executed agreements.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of bill 920, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilperson Charlin.
Bill 881, resolution amending resolution number 411 of 2023, which authorized the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement with Bike Share Pittsburgh, Inc. to provide annual pogo bicycle share memberships to any city of Pittsburgh employee requesting one and providing for the payment of the cost thereof by increasing the authorized spend by $35,000 for an additional year for total new not to exceed cost of $70,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Discussion?
Discussion, Councilman Wilson.
Yeah, I just want to thank the administration and the human resources for making sure that we're going to renew this, this program. I'm happy to see the success of it and that our employees can be offered unlimited 30-minute rides through the Bike Share program. So thanks, and thank council for supporting this as well. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Further discussion?
This is one of your many.
Seeing none, all those in favor of bill 881, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson.
Bill 749, recommitted paper, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with Oberly for services relating to non-congregate shelter services related to the home AARP program for a total not to exceed amount of $1,500,000.
Motion to hold two weeks.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of a two-week hold, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Bill be held for two weeks. New papers, bill 921.
Bill 921, resolution authorizing the office of the mayor on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into one-year mini reimbursement agreements for the 2024 Love Year Block Program at a cost not to exceed $20,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of bill 921, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, bill 922.
Bill 922, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of City Planning to enter into a professional services agreement with EcoTone Renewables in an amount not to exceed $13,000 to support the city's USDA community composting pilot.
Motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of bill 922, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services Committee chaired by Councilwoman Kayle Smith.
Bill 903, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into an agreement or agreement with the Pittsburgh Board of Public Education for the purpose of providing meals in connection with the 2024, 2025 Food Service Program. The total cost shall not exceed $750,000 over one year.
Do we have a motion?
To approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of bill 903, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, bill 904.
Bill 904, resolution further amending and supplementing resolution 712 of 2022 as amended entitled, authorizing the mayor, director of Parks and Recreation, and the director of Finance to enter on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh into an amended sublease agreement or agreements with the Boys and Girls Club of Western Pennsylvania for the continued operations of the Lawrenceville Senior Center located within Leslie Park as originally authorized by resolution 55 and 91 of 2011 at an overall cost of $198,000 and with the term expiring March 31, 2024, to extend the contract with the term now expiring on March 31, 2027 and increasing the cost by $57,600 for an updated not to exceed cost of $255,600.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of bill 904, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross.
Bill 887, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of City Planning to amend and renew the agreement with Clupify to provide a sustainable procurement platform software solution for some not to exceed $24,000 for one year whereafter it will be put out to bid.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of bill 887, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee chaired by Councilman Mosley.
Bill 888, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for 215 South 21st Street at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of bill 888, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to bill 890.
Bill 890, resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for costs associated with the Ruth Finch Street retaining wall, providing for payment of the cost thereof not to exceed a total of $1,225,765.24, an increase of $295,328.24 from the previously enacted authorization, fully reimbursable at no cost to the city of Pittsburgh, and further amending resolution 857 of 2023 by increasing slope failure remediation by $295,328.24.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of bill 890, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, bill 891.
Bill 891, resolution repealing resolution 298 of 2022, effective June 14, 2022, authorizing the URA of Pittsburgh to acquire all the city's rights, title, and interests, if any, and into the publicly owned properties in the 26th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as block 77N, lots 103 and 104, 243 and 247 Kennedy Avenue, council district number 6, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of bill 891, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, bill 892.
Bill 892, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land between the URA of Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh Land Bank for the sale of block 9M, lot 97, in the 3rd Ward of the city of Pittsburgh, Cliff Street, council district number 6, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of bill 892, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, bill 893.
Bill 893, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land between the URA of Pittsburgh and Ryan and Veronica England for the sale of block 50G, lots 4, 7, and 8, in the 10th Ward of the city, Rosetta Street, council district number 9, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of bill 893, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, bill 894.
Bill 894, resolution approving execution of a deed by in between the URA of Pittsburgh and Somerset Neighborhood Association to convey block 88G, lot 375, block 88H, lot 250, block 88M, lots 158, 160, 162, and 164, block 88R, lot 121, and block 88S, lot 15, private ways and open space in the 14th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh, Squirrel Hill South, Somerset, at Frick Park, council district number 5, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of bill 894, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, bill 895.
Bill 895, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's rights, title, and interests, if any, and into the publicly owned property in the 12th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as block 125H, lot 345, zero Bennett Street, council district number 9, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Councilman Coghill.
First of all, I'd like to say aye on remaining bills. I hope that, and secondly, you know, I really want to congratulate Sally. You know, I love seeing these things in front of me. Wasn't that long ago, where was the land bank going?
Oh, thank you, Heather. You want me to repeat that, Sally? She got the boot on, too. No, I just really wanted to point out, Sally, great job. You know, you're going to need more funding. You'll be able to count on me, I will tell you, in the future because I love seeing properties come through here. It tells me you're on the right track. And Councilman Wilson, I know you're on the board, correct? And I know you were instrumental, not only we'll see you, pour you at one time, but you know, so, so great job. You know, really impressed. Aye on all and anything with land bank. Thank you very much.
So noted. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of bill 895, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, bill 896.
Bill 896, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's rights, title, and interests, if any, and into the publicly owned properties in the 26th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as block 77N, lots 103 and 104, 243 and 247 Kennedy Avenue, council district number 6, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of bill 896, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, bill 897.
Bill 897, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's rights, title, and interests, if any, and into the publicly owned property in the 20th Ward, city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, block 42N, lot 143, 1022 Faridale Street, council district number 2, no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of bill 897, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, bill 898.
Bill 898, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's rights, title, and interests, if any, and into the publicly owned properties in the 13th Ward, city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as block 174J, lots 275 and 276, block 174K, lots 273 and 274, zero 7233 and 7235 Bennett Street, council district number 9, no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of bill 898, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, bill 899.
Bill 899, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's rights, title, and interests, if any, and into the publicly owned properties in the 18th Ward title, and interests if any, and into the publicly owned properties in the 18th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 15M, Lots 257, 258, 259, 260, 261, 262, and 263, Estella Avenue and Shelfon Street, Council District Number 3, no cost to the city.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 899, please indicate by saying aye. Aye? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 900.
Bill 900, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's rights, title, and interests if any, and into the publicly owned property in the 13th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 174K, Lots 341, 341A, 342, 342A, 361, 361A, 361B, 387, 389, and Block 174P, Lots 141, 143, 153, 165, 171, 172, 173, 176, 179, 184, 188, 191, 192, 193, 199, 223, 259, 260, 261, 273, 274, 275, 276, 280, 281, 282, 283, 287, and 344, Bennett Street, Starett Street, 610 Starett Street, Kelly Street, 7311 Kelly Street, 7340 Kelly Street, Hamilton Avenue, 7317 Hamilton Avenue, 7365 Hamilton Avenue, and Formosa Way, Council District Number 9, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion?
Discussion?
I should have been more clever whenever the councilman was, Councilman Coghill was making comment about the land bank, but I just want to say that, you know, I appreciate the comments, but I just want to say that it was, it was this council right here that negotiated that deal, that, that agreement that was between the URA, the city, and the land bank, so that we can literally move these properties like this. So, more cooperation like that is, is very useful. We saw a little, you know, I'm bad with jokes sometimes, but a lot of political football earlier, or sports ball. And so, it's great to, you know, have all these bills from the land bank and, and all these different block and lots that are being sold and repurposed and, and recycled in an appropriate way. And we could do more, you know, with more continued investment in the land bank. And I will say we have the budget coming up and we have only two employees at the land bank. And it would be great to build that more. You know, we talked about a lot of different cities like Detroit and other things earlier. Detroit has a massive land bank staff that, you know, obviously for different needs, from a different time, but looking forward to that conversation as the budget comes up. And I just want to make a note about Sally. She is great. She was my former employee. Sally's path was always to be involved in land recycling, so that is her own doing and she is her own person. So, just want to state that for the record. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Councilman Mosley?
Yeah, I just want to echo Councilman Wilson's very worthy praise of the executive director of the land bank, Sally Stedelman, who's here in chambers today. You know, I haven't, you know, been a board member of the land bank, you know, for long. I've only joined this year, you know, since I've been on council, but want to thank Councilman Wilson for his leadership as chair, council president Lavelle's leadership, you know, as vice chair. And, you know, I wasn't around, you know, for a lot of the history of the land bank. I know it was looked at very differently than it's looked at today. And, you know, maybe, you know, I could look at myself as the free agent acquisition of 2024 that, that made the difference, but I really think it's the leadership of the quarterback of Sally Stedelman. So, I just want to be in that, you know, you sat around for a couple hours, not only do the, the good work that you do at the land bank, but, you know, your patience, you know, today, you know, sitting through our deliberations. Just want to take this opportunity to give you a shot on. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you very much. All those in favor of Bill 900, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 901.
And Bill 901, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's rights, title, and interests if any, and into the publicly owned properties in the 12th Ward, city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 124N, Lots 312, 312A, and 312B, Block 125B, Lots 126, 141, 143, and 160, Stovener Way, Meadow Street, Lowell Street, and Carver Street, Council District Number 9, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Discussion?
Second discussion?
Uh, just very briefly, Sally's great and everything this land bank does is fantastic. I want to thank the clerk's office and Madam Clerk for being able to rattle off all those numbers, because they're, they're making my head spin over here. So, as hard as Sally works, I know you work as hard, just as hard. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 901, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Affirmative recommendation. Having exhausted our meeting agenda, moves us on to meeting announcements. This afternoon at 2:00 PM, council will hold a cable cast post-agenda relative to mental health initiatives chaired by Councilperson Charlin. Next week, council will hold their regular meeting and standing committees meeting on Tuesday, October 1st, and Wednesday, October 2nd, at 10:00 AM respectively. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 AM the morning of each meeting. To register to speak at these meetings and hearings, please fill out the signup form at the council meeting webpage by the deadlines. You may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Any further comment from members? Seeing none. We have a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Meeting's adjourned.